It must be as low and we are going to have thousands of candidates. Dates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to facilitate in administer for an election point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties and it must not be refunded as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest an individual independent candidate and get higher voters than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity as an option to contest as a political party. We are strongly discouraged by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign for parliament or legislature because if such is permitted to, if ever such is permitted to, the country will, a parliamentary, parliamentary be in elections. I thank you.
Greetings Chair. Greetings Chair, my name is Bridget Tusi from Sprite View A107. As the EFF, we do not support the bill as a country. We do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above the political challenges that it will bring. The bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use the money to control individuals that are not accountable to the collective but to themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. The threshold for the nominations of independent candidates must not be less than 20,000 and these must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reasons we are saying this, the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of, if it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections. That will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that the independent candidates must make must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of the independent candidate will come with costs and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and the option to contest as a political party. We strongly discouraged by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if it is permitted, the country will be in a permanent state of by-elections. Thank you very much.
Next.
Thank you Chair President. My name is Mulo Ndomkuina. I'm from, I'm from Ward 49 in Katla Home. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready for administrative, administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. The bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general elections on the following conditions. One, the threshold for the nominations of independent candidate must not be less than 20,000 and this must be the people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually and one by one. Two, the reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of this, it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national election and that will be impossible for efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. Three, the deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties. It must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with costs and the people wish to stand should not be taking chances. Four, those who contest as individual independent candidate must get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament and must forfeit remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. Five, we strongly discouraged by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. Thank you.
Greetings Chair. My name is Ashli Mawason from Timpisa Ward 102. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, from both of the IEC and parliament, over and above the political challenges it will bring. The bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. Number one, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than 20,000 and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify themselves individually, one by one. Number two, the reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections. That will be impossible efficiently administer from electoral point of view. Number three, the deposit of independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with costs and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Number four, those who contest as individuals independent candidates and get higher votes than they're required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. Last, we strongly discouraged by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. Thank you.
Thanks. Greetings to you Chair, parliamentary members and listeners at large. My name is Nong Osolo from a youth organization called Abacha Force of Change. I'm a co-founder and managing director of the organization. I speak on behalf of young people and we find this bill very important to us as young people because we know that for so long, the voices of young people have been suppressed, they have been undermined and most importantly, they have been modified. It is a given history that in South Africa, political parties continue to use young people as voting tools. They continue to use them as mobilizing tools. They never take young people seriously in terms of decision-making and this bill is what will then take young people serious because it will allow them to contest elections as independent in their respective places. This is important Chair for us because history tells us that politics have been defined as political parties, which is not true. We know that elections, every time you think of elections, you will think of political parties, but the last local elections have proven to us that politics have got nothing to do with political parties but everything to do with activism in a respective space. How will this affect us? It will obviously de-politicize most of the things. From where I'm coming from as a young person dealing with young people, especially from an education perspective, think of an independent minister running as a ministerial position in education. That minister will be, and expect that minister will have full interest in education without trying to protect the interests of the political parties. As we speak now in parliament, 400 individuals are sitting there and none of them are speaking about education as the fundamental liberator. You cannot speak of land without speaking about education because then people will occupy land and put checks because they don't understand the value of land. So it's important to speak of education as the fundamental liberator. So for us to have an independent in the education space, speaking of education with meaning, with African identity, we will then realize a total liberation and total freedom beyond political liberation. What is the challenge with the executive bill that we are facing now that is being passed in parliament? Firstly, the bill is unconstitutional and non-democratic because it says that independent candidate will only be limited to 200 seats whereas political parties will have access to 400 seats. That is unfair on its own and that we are saying fair chance should be given to everyone else. Proportionality and constituency is also a loophole in this bill because if an independent candidate must reach a quota or a threshold of for example, 13.5 thousand, 13,500 voters and each independent gets 13,000 voters and you say you have about, let's say you get about independent candidates that have 13,000 voters and you have lot of independent, about 100 independent candidates that have 13,000 voters. It says that each of them would have not reached a quota, but if you combine their vote, it would have reached 1.5 million votes and that takes about 90 plus of them to parliament, but in this bill, it says none of them will go to parliament and we think that is unfair. So we must, we must look at the proportionality and the constituency. The list of independent candidates must be created and be allowed. When we speak of vacancies, it's disappointing to listen to political parties saying that a vacancy should not be filled because then we will have by-elections all the time. How illogical of that view. We have by-elections for local elections all the time and we have more than thousands of councillors. In parliament, we only have 400 people who said only independent candidate will die and then we go to by-elections. We are saying it's important that the votes of citizens must be taken serious. If a voter decides to vote me into parliament and that, and I possibly die, that vacancy must be filled. The voter must be yet again granted a chance to vote for another independent candidate. How do you leave a vacancy open? Not even in any company is done, not even in any institution is done. How absurd would parliament think of that? It's important.
Sorry, I'm sure you're aware that political parties are making their submissions. So I'm trying to protect you so that you don't enter into a space where you have no authority on. We will appreciate that your argument must not in the main ridicule other submissions that have been made. So I'm, we're trying to protect you so that you are within your submission.
Thank you for participating Chair.
And you must work towards closing.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
So I want to emphasize then on that, that by-elections are important. They are democratic and they are accommodated in our constitution. There's nothing wrong with by-elections and it doesn't matter how long they take. We have IEC that has full budget for that. We think that it's unfair to disregard votes of independent candidates and we think that the bill should not ever disregard any vote of independent candidates because in that it means then we are trying to include independent candidates instead of accommodating independent candidate as the ruling of the court. Chair, we also think that the review of list for political parties is also unfair to the voters and this is where we want the voters to say, at the point where we are passing a bill that supports independent candidate, it becomes fair to a voter to say, one, we are voting for an independent candidate that we are seeing, but we are most importantly sure that this independent candidate will not be changed when we win elections. Whereas with other, with political parties, it becomes unfair to the party, to the voter because if I vote for example, Tulima Donzela, but she belongs to a political party and then at the time that party wins, they change Tulima Donzela. I think that is unfair to me as a voter, whereas with independent candidate, it becomes fair because you know that person will not be reviewed, will not be changed on the list. Lastly Chair, something that we think we should include as a youth organization is that this bill should please kindly be inclusive both for national elections and also for provincial elections, for local elections. So when we speak of proportionality at national and provincial level, we are also highlighting this as an important factor at a local level. But without intimidating the parliament, we are saying if this bill is not passed, of course we are going to challenge it at the court and like we gave a warning before, we are saying these things take process and they are prolonging the processes whereas in return, they are discouraging people to vote, especially young people to vote. At the point you are discouraging young people to vote because you are prolonging the process and they start losing interest in electoral system, then you are saying more than 50% of the country is not going to vote and that is non-democratic. I thank you.
Next.
Greetings. Thank you very much Chair. My name is Suleta Wachiri. I'm from Ward 96 in Davitin. Chair President, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we're ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but to themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. That the threshold for nomination of independent candidate must not be less than 20,000 and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible for efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidates must have, must pay, must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with costs and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discouraged by by-elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in by-elections. Thank you very much.
Greetings. I'm not going to speak in English. I want to explain myself properly in Sisutu. Thank you. My name is Mushiri Jamini.
I'm a chairperson here South Africa Justice Forum.
Come again?
South African Justice Forum.
I come from South African Justice Forum.
I'm a chairperson, also a founder of it.
I'm also a chairperson and a founder. I'm here just to come to ask because I think I'm puzzled by now.
Yes.
Because we were invited. We were invited, but we did not get the agenda. We understand it's about amending the bill. But we wanted that you gave us all the details so that when we bring our submissions, we submit it properly. Because outside there, the poor. I call them the poor of the poor rest, pep store. They don't know what's happening. They are like me. It only benefits those who knows. We as the poor, it does not benefit us. And people outside there are very poor. And people are sitting there in the parliament. They are talking and talking. Because when you plow a seat, you need to get results. I don't want to go, I don't want to prolong you. So I'm a Sisutu person. If they say there's a traditional gathering, I want to know what is it about. Because it sounds like I'm in a wrong place. I feel confused. I thank you. Thank you.
Hello?
My dear friends, we want to explain very briefly. The national constitution. Says that every South African must have a right to vote. Or be voted for. When there are elections at local government. Provincial level. And national level. The bill, I mean the act, the 1978. Only allows South Africans to vote for independence only at local government. The Constitutional Court. Has now ruled that that electoral act is wrong. It's a miss of the constitution. It does not comply with the constitution. So it said to parliament, where there are people. At provincial and national. Who want to stand as independents. They must be allowed to do so. Therefore, the constitutional, I mean the parliament has been instructed. To amend that electoral act. So that just as in the local government, people can stand for elections. Even at provincial and national, there must be a similar situation. The Chair President, thank you.
I think the veteran was just reaffirming what we did when we opened the meeting. But at least veteran, there was a demonstration that members who made submission, they went through the amendment. Can we take further hands? Number one. No, number one. Yeah, you can number two. Number three. No, you're number three mister. Yes. Number four, the glasses. Number five, yes. Five, yes. Number six, the back. Number seven. Number eight. Number nine. No, behind Komet Lusiba. Number 10, at the back. How many seats do you have there? Okay, join, number 11. Number 12, at the back. Yes. Number 13. How many seats are there? They're full, okay. We'll come back to another set. So. Are you assisted madam? Are you assisted? Are you assisted with the? Yes. Okay, we'll come, we'll come back to you.
Eh, good day, eh, Portfolio Committee of Own Home Affairs. My name is Bongegileno Koyo. I'm the citizen of the Republic of South Africa, a registered voter in Ward forty-one, from Mola Kadins. I'm also serving as a community worker, leading eh, road club football association as the chairman. I also thank the opportunity to make a submission today. Hi, Mr. Bongegileno Koyo. Objection to this eh, draft electoral amendment bill. On basis that. On basis that eh, it excludes. And, and basis that it, it, it misinterpret's proportionality. It is of my view that eh, as per the constitution and some section on it. The constitution specifies that eh, proportionality in general does not speaks about overall proportionality. My main objection is based on a pure eh, proportional representation system. Which in option one, as you mentioned, Chairperson. It spoke about eh, including the independent candidates without the constituency system. I propose that eh. As per the two thousand and three Ministerial Tax Team Recommendations Report. Which the majority recommendation there. Spoke about, spoke about a mixed eh, member electoral system. I eh, propose that in that mixed eh, member electoral system. That we should use a parallel voting system where. The legislative ballot will be one. Electing the legislator. Where, when we calculate proportionality. For an independent candidate, those votes that he receives, if he needs to be allocated compensatory seats. The only method that could be used should be that eh. Independent candidate will be given an option in this bill to constitute a, a political group. And furthermore, I want to specify my support for a member eh, mi- a mixed member representation. Whereby, the two hundred seats over the four hundred seats of the National Assembly should be spilt to the district municipalities and the metros. In a manner in which. The boundaries that will be used will be not a red demarcation eh, approach, but rather. It will be clustering the wards in, in instances of the metro. Or demarcating on basis of the local municipality boundaries. I further want to make these following procedures as per the electoral eh, amendment bill. That in the event that the National Assembly vote on my proposal for a mixed eh, member electoral system. We should introduce an electoral threshold where. Threshold will not be determined by how many signatures you collect in the community. But both a party candidate and an independent candidate. Electoral threshold will be determined by ward nomination meetings. I further call on this electoral bill. That parliament must ensure that the political party funding eh, act is applicable to in, independent candidates. As citizens of the country, we are interested to know who, who is sent in eh, in, in, in political office. Who finds him. So that we avoid a situation whereby we have crush revolutionaries. Who take orders from foreign eh, powers. In my submission, Chair, in the interest of time, I wish also to place political reforms in this city. As we deal with eh, with the electoral act, we must also. Be aware that the president of the country. Or the, the office of the president does not form part of the National Assembly. Which then, in this electoral bill, as you propose, I do not see any way, where it talks about how it to address that issue. I therefore make a proposal that we should have a direct election of presidents. A direct election of premiers and a direct election of mayors. It is unfair for us as the voters. That we have people, we, in, for, for instance, in municipality like Ekurleni. The current incumbent was never, was, was not the winner of the elections. But now he leads the municipality. How more would such approach be used in par- in provincial and national? In conclusion, I want, I wish, I wish to urge the, the Portfolio Committee members. The National Assembly in large. As we know that the final decisions will be made by yourselves when voting for this bill. But I need to also to, 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 to place this on, on. Or to urge you. That this shouldn't be a party, party interest matter. It should be about South Africa, not by any party or their interest. In event that you vote in an illogical, irrational way. I urge civil society to challenge this bill. In order that we all are, are given our, are, are ensure that our rights are not violated. As per chapter two of the constitution, subsection two and subsection three. Thank you, Chairperson.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Firstly, I would like to greet the Chairperson for the opportunity that I'm given and all the protocol observed. Uh, I'm here to make a submission. My name is Yunis Matlocha. I'm a registered voter from Tembisa in Ward seven. I'm here to make electoral submission. It stays as follows. As E F F, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready. Administ- I mean, we are rea- that we are ready administratively for the bill. Both from the I E C and the parliament over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen the democrats. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process. By people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective by themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position. Independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. The threshold of the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than twenty thousand. And this must not be people who are registered to vote, this, this, sorry, must be people who are regi- who are registered to vote. And the I E C must be able to verify them individually, meaning one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those waiting to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections. And that will be impossible to efficiently administer from the electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties. And it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidates get higher votes than is required to get awaited in parliament. Must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity. And options to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage elections eh, to replace independent candidate who, sorry, we strongly discourage by elections. To replace indi- candidate, independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature. Because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? Thank you. You want me to scream into it? Good morning, everyone. I'm councillor Kaed Guerrero. I'm from the Democratic Alliance. I'm a ward councillor in Ward ninety-two in the city of Ekuruleni. The Constitutional Court in its judgment on the eleventh of June twenty twenty declared that the Electoral Act, Act seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight, is unconstitutional. As it does not allow individual candidates, adult citizens to contest the elections as an independent candidate. The principal act states that adult citizens may be elected to the National Assembly, the N A. And provincial, and provincial legislature only through the membership of political parties. Parliament was given twenty-four months to amend the elect- um, the Electoral Amendment Act, Act seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight. The Constitutional Court held that the freedom of association implied both freedom and association and freedom not to associate. Practically, it means that the, practically, it means that independent candidates should be allowed to exercise their rights. To stand for public office and if elected, to hold office without being coerced to join a political party. The purpose of the bill is to amend the Electoral Act, Act seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight in order to. One, provide the nomination of independent candidates to contest elections to the national, to the National Assembly or provincial legislature. Two, provide for recruitment and qualifications for which must be met by persons who wish to be registered as independent candidates. Three, provide for procedure to follow for a non-compliant nomination of an independent candidate. Four, provide for the inspection of copies of lists of independent candidates and accompanying documents. Five, provide for objections to independent candidates. Six, provide for the inclusion of the list of independent candidates entitled to contest elections. Seven, provide that independent candidates be bound by the Electoral Code of Conduct. Eight, provide for the return of a deposit to independent candidates in certain circumstances. The Democratic Alliance supports the bill in its indepe- in that independent candidates should be allowed to exercise their rights to stand for public office. However, we want to reiterate that independents must only contest individually and not as collective. The Democratic Alliance point of view is that the electoral system involving constituencies should have proper constituencies. Be a two hundred or three hundred in line with our historical position. We support the principle of direct accountability as opposed to the A N C's clear intent to avoid accountability. I thank you.
Eh, so, Salmo N'onge, eh, Chairperson of the House.
Great things, everyone. Chairperson.
Yes. Eh, my submission is short, like my shirt that I'm wearing. But it is long enough because it cover the assets that I do have and also the asset of the South Africans. Eh, Chair. My submission. First, eh, first thing first, the ruling of the Constitutional Court, Constitutional Court. Eh, it makes sense. But the challenges after. It's a problem. Let me state this fact. More Karinates, more Karinates will be on the ballot. Chairperson, more, 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 more on a co- eh. More Karinates will be more in the ballot. So when there are more eh. We'll find ourselves being supported by eh, the capitalist. And the ballot people will be like a bible from Genesis to Sambu. No, and of which will be a challenge for a chairman. But it is my submission. I'll get my points.
Languages.
Yes. Eh, Chair, it will be a bible from Genesis to Sambu. But remember, as South Africans in this constitution. We have, abantabati disabled.
We have people living with disabilities.
So it will be hard for them, Chairperson, when you go to that ballot. On that bible that I'm saying, to go and express their Karinates or their, or their vote. One, Chair. And two, the I E C is not ready. We, we from the previous elections currently. We have seen how this pandemic, Covid. We have seen. Still na manja, abantababi ma court, Chair.
Eh, people are still going through courts right now?
So the I E C. But we went there. Say Covid and so on, so. It was wrong. But it's still in my elections. We are here. In terms of the system. New system like technology for the I E C is not ready, eh, Chair. So how can it be, abantu book majisla bokoko nabobani, that doesn't know how to use additional eh, like. So when a hammer to cast a vote, people will make it short, like maybe your, your screen will say now I'm carrying it to, to cut it short. That's our, that's our challenge as South Africans. So how can it be that we are ready as South Africans to support more and more and more? What is this? Eh, ama, ama Karinates as of a la manja, ama Karin. So it will be a challenge for us as South Africans. So bengtela nje kuti eh, eh, the, the, the parliament, I note, Chairperson. Because we can't, so in other words, in short, you say, meina, I don't support that current. We must fix our own. The I E C must fix my system here. So I don't support.
I don't support the bill because I believe the I E C systems are not yet up to speed and not yet up to date. So on those bases, I don't support the bill.
Good afternoon, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for, for this opportunity and platform to be able to engage you. My name is Khawrelo Vincent Mashiani, also primarily known as Exquisite Vince. I'm from Ward thirty-five in Germiston. And I'm a member of the African National Congress in Goodstendi. In my personal capacity, as well as a member of the A N C, I'd like to say that we do welcome the amendment of the Electoral Bill. Now, my submission is based solely on these few paramount points that I would like. To be taken very highly. For the longest time, the sports, arts and recreation department has not been taken to paramount significance. As artists in this country, we do not have true representation because we've been marginalized as people of a particular culture, a particular sector. Which suggests that we are only good for being available for rallies and campaigning behind certain political parties of our choices. Based on our ideologies that we share with these particular political parties. A lot of young people, especially in the arts, do not understand the processes and significance of voting. Because they do not understand that when you vote for a branch executive committee. It subsequently determines the provincial executive committee, which subsequently determines. Sorry, the regional. Executive committee to the provincial executive committee, which subsequently determines the national executive committee. Now, this is how it affects me as an arts practitioner. It means that if I, for instance, support a particular political party. And they choose a minister of arts and culture that does not understand the struggles of young people, the struggle of artists. Not so long ago, we had legendary Patrick Shai who commits suicide because of mental health. But if we. But if we look at the contribution of the man in the culture and also challenging and ericating some of the challenges that young people are facing in this country, you realize that we do not have a true representation in the arts and culture of exactly what it is that is happening in our fraternity or in our sector. So, with that being said, I do support the new Electoral Act based on the fact that this will give us an opportunity to have the likes of myself becoming a Minister of Arts and Culture perhaps in the next five years or in the next ten years. Miriam Makeba was the first South African in the United Nations to represent us and talk about the issues that young people and South Africans at large are experiencing in the country. So, what I'm trying to say is that my submission is solely based on the fact that this proportional representation is going to assist the country subsequently on a very, very, very higher level because we cannot shy away from the significance of the arts and culture in this country. During the lockdown, retail companies, restaurants, bars were being prioritized in terms of compensation and being taken care of in a form of retribution because of what was transpired in the country. I can tell you in my personal capacity that I did not benefit anything from the COVID-19 relief fund after multiple application and submitting all of the documents that I needed to submit because why? We are just good for entertainment, we are clowns that just dance and make people happy in the households. When people want to make love, they use us. When people want to worship God, they use us. When people want to, want to have fun, they use us. During lockdown, people were confined in their home spaces where there was a lockdown house party that was happening. Many times in my region, for instance, I'll tell you, I've hosted events that were supported by the city of Ekuruleni in most cases.
Thank you, Minister.
I'm just gonna wrap it up real quick so that you get the gist of what I'm saying.
Just go to the minister.
So, we have people that are coming from far away into our wards because we do not understand the process of politics, that will come in a space of arts and culture and host events sponsored and brought to you by the city, where in their proposals, they were meant to uplift the arts and sports and culture and develop young artists, but that does not happen.
I think.
You're cutting, you're cutting there, I can't hear you.
You have labored only a point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Nakali vizo, Kimpo Mapogo Mpete.
My name is Mpo Mapogo Mpete. Mapogo.
Yeah. Eh, I'm from Ward one-one-two, the last word in Takan, Ekuruleni, far east. Eh, releba mokha, so YEF.
We as the EFF organization.
We do not support eh, the bill because as a country, we do, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. The bill is going to weaken our democracy. It is going to be used eh, by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves to infiltrate oversight and legislative processes. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. Those who contest as individuals, independent candidates, and get higher votes than is required to get eh, a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity option eh, to contest as political parties. Eh, we strongly discouraged by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, eh, the country will permanently be in eh, elections instead of providing service delivery to our people. Eh, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than eh, twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify eh, the individual one by one. The reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for this, for those wishing to contest is because eh, of it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national, and that will be impossible eh, to efficiently administer from eh, an electoral, electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidates eh, must pay must be same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost. And people who wish eh, to stand should not eh, be taking chances. So, this, this deposit must not be refunded. Eh, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chairperson. My name is Nana Nkeng from Ward nine, Tembisa, North Subregion. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both for the IEC and parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. The bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must be contest, must contest national general elections on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidate must not be less than two, twenty thousand, and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. And the reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electrical point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must be not refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than it is required to get eh, awaiting in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they will have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as political party. We strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidate who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. Thank you, Chair.
Chairperson, members of parliament eh, and everyone in the House, the, they, all, all the respective leaders from the communities. My name is Jeremiah Maraba. I'm from Ward eight, Tembisa, here in Ekuruleni. Eh, Chairperson, I want to start with from the code from Entade Musua Lekota. When it says that eh, everyone in the country has arrived to vote, I want to remind you and assure you that there's many, plenty of people in the previous local elections which were denied an opportunity to cast their vote because of the problem of the administration that we have in IEC where the, the people have registered to vote but were not appearing on the voter's roll and eh, there was never a solution to that. Now, it is, it is on that basis eh, Chairperson, that we are saying the country is not ready for the bill eh, because of the, the administration. But however, eh, since the Constitutional Court has given the position, we therefore wish to submit that eh, the threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reasons we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because eh, currently it is low and eh, should it be low, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to eh, effectively administer eh, from the electoral point of view. Let, let me eh, on your submission eh, on the purpose of the bill, Chair, you are proposing that eh, eh, the independent candidates should actually receive the refund. And eh, you further say on, on eh, particular circumstances and, and those circumstances are not defined. So therefore, it, eh, the, the bill is not clear and therefore will create a lot of problems because then we are not going to know eh, when to make eh, a refund or not. And but, and on that submission, we wish to say that eh, the deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it is eh, it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost and people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidates and get higher votes than it is required eh, to get a weight in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We further want to make a submission that eh, we strongly discourage by elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in eh, elections. Eh, we therefore, as the EFF, we do not support the bill because as I alluded, the country we feel is not eh, ready eh, in terms of administering this bill. I thank you, Chair.
Good afternoon to everyone in the hall. Good afternoon to everyone in the hall. My name is Nete Mba Chigichela. I stand as an independent South African citizen who is a voter. I'm from Ward forty-one. South African citizens have a right to vote and be voted for. I support the amendment of the bill based on the freedom it provides for individuals who wants to participate in the provincial and national elections. This will allow younger persons to occupy seats and partake in governance of the country. In fact, it will be right that even the officials of parliament, they can be politically selected to represent their parties, must move, not saturate, with each and every new administration of the country. Having the same people for twenty years plus in the same positions and not even contributing innovatively to the progress and proper functioning of our country cannot be tolerated anymore. I support this bill as it will also do away with these parties that are formed every time there's elections, eh, they can be national or provincial, these new parties, they just boom, out of nowhere. So, this bill will ensure that people don't necessarily have to affiliate themselves and be part of parties. They can stand as individuals without forming a party because two years down the line, we don't hear anything about these parties and their purposes. The threshold eh, can be higher or whatever the regulations you guys put is fine. However, this bill will allow every South African citizen a chance to contest. The country needs new methodologies to address its problems and this is one of the new methodologies it's trying to implement. Just so you know, guys, eh, I've just completed my public administration and management and I'm only seeing one lady in that committee, so I wish to be part of that committee in future, probably two years' time. Um, this amendment though will give constituencies, the voters, to choose a specific person they see fit without having the, 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 the freedom that is, um, that is, that has boundaries in terms of having to choose a party, not a specific person. Eh, thank you so much for the opportunity and thank you so much, guys, for, 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 for coming here as well so that you can be able to partake. Eh, as I'm going to part, I'll just like to, to, because we've been delegated to come and ensure the process, I would also like to delegate you guys to go and greet the President on my behalf, tell him that Nete Mba Chigichela says, thank you.
Thank you so much, all the members of the community present here and the political parties represented. I also like to thank the members of parliament.
Eh, Chair.
Now missed.
Eh, as an EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill.
Sorry, they are questioning your name.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my name, I'm Saben Kumalo, from Ward eight, at North Subregion, Tembisa, here in Ekuruleni. Eh, I'm calling as an advocate, eh, as an EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country.
I want to apologize for that, Chair.
As a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to the, to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidate. must not be less than twenty thousand. And this must be people who are registered to vote and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of it is lower. We are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from, from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidate must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidate will come with cost. And people who wish to stand should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher votes than is required to get a weight in perma, in eh, in parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party. We strongly discourage by, by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election. As well, eh, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Eh, greetings, Chair, eh, and members of parliament. Eh, my name is Duthuzelombambani. I'm the Chairperson of the ANC here in ward thirty-five. I'm also a ward councillor. Eh, I'm here to support the bill eh but under these conditions. The ANC has always supported the proportional representation system as it best suited to a country as diverse as ours in terms of race, class, and language. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by more than one quarter of one percent of the population is able to find representation in parliament and speaks on behalf of the, of that constituency. We have never supported a first past the post constituency system as, as it is very difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation when only one or maybe a handful of people are selected to represent a distinct geographical eh area. Each of, each jo, geographical area has its own levels of diversity and divisions. The PR system has meant that even small parties that get as little as zero point twenty-five percent of the vote remains in parliament and have a voice in every legislature. It is hard to imagine any other small party winning constituency seats when constituencies, if they were two hundred for parliament, would have at least one hundred thousand voters. The PR system also allows better representation of women, youth, and other marginalized groups. The ANC supports option one of the ministerial advisory committee as it contains in Amendment B. We broadly support it as the best option for implementing the Constitutional Court order. We do however have some very serious concerns about the practicality of some of the proposals currently contained in the bill. We ask that Home Affairs Committee to consider these challenges carefully as they may cause unintended consequences that can harm our democracy. We wish to avoid further court challenges by either independents or parties that may feel disadvantaged. We also wish to maintain the principles in the constitution that demands from us that our electoral system reflects overall proportionality. Problematic long ballot caused by too many independents and parties on one ballot. We are very concerned that the new system can result in a very long ballot paper that is impractical. For example, if you have forty-eight national parties in, as in twen, in twenty nineteen and another two hundred individuals who stand as independents, the ballot paper will need about ten pages within twenty-five names per page. A multi-page ballot is a big problem for voters, the IEC and parties. It will need much longer time to vote as voters must search for the name of their party or independent, among other names. A ten-page booklet for a ballot will mean the IEC needs to have much bigger budget or printing, distribution, and stuff. Even ballot boxes will have to be ten times as many to accommodate the ballot. Counters will have to check every page of every ballot to make sure it is not spoiled by a voter voting twice.
Yeah, work towards your finishing.
Counting would also take five to ten...
Work towards closing.
Oh, thank you very much. Eh, let me quickly eh close. We believe independents should compete on the same terms as parties. The Constitutional Court obliges parliament to make amendments to act, to allow independents to stand against parties in national and provincial elections. It does not force us to change a system that has served the country well and led to voters, to voters or parties ever contesting that we had free and fair national and provincial elections. We have to make sure the system stays fair, simple, and practical. A crowded and long ballot can make elections a logical nightmare. So I will submit, Chair.
Thank you. Next?
Eh, thank you very much, eh, Chairperson, members of parliament present and community at large. Eh, my name is Noli Kasmala. I'm from ward forty-nine, here in Ekuruleni. The past two local elections have exposed how IEC, it is not yet competent in terms of administration. Hence, we always see numerous eh objections after election. It is on this basis that as EFF, we make the following submission: We do not support the bill because, as a country, we don't, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both the IEC and parliament and above all, it will bring other political instabilities. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is going to be used to infiltrate oversight and legislative eh process by people who want to use money to capture and control individuals that are not accountable to a collective by themselves. However, the Constitutional Court has ruled to say independent candidates must contest national general election. Therefore, the following condition must be implemented: The threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and these people must be eh registered to vote and IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. The reason we are saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because if it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. The deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as deposit paid by the political party. It must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost and people who wish to stand must not be taking chances. And lastly, we strongly discourage by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in election mode unlike eh concentrating on eh service, service delivery to people.
Eh, greetings to everyone and members of the parliament. Eh, I won't be long, Chair. Eh, my name is Terence Ngwadi Sibutelezi from ward forty-seven eh, ANC member in good standing. No par, I was a forty-seven. Eh, I would want to support the call for ANC eh, I support the following approach of the amendment and amending the Electoral Act. The ANC has always supported the proportional representation system as it is the best suited to a country as diverse as ours in terms of race, class, language. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by more than one quarter of the percent, percentage of the popla, population is able to find representation in parliament and speaks of behalf, on behalf of the constituency. We have never supported a first past the post constituency system as it is very difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation when only one or maybe a handful of people are selected to represent a distinct geographical area. Each geographical area has its own levels of diversity and division. The PR system has meant that even small parties that get as little as zero point two-five percent of the vote remain in parliament and have a voice in every legislature. It is hard to imagine any other small party winning constituency seats when constituency is there where two hundred for parliament would have at least hundred thousand voters. The PR system also allows better representation of women, youth, and other marginalized groups. The ANC supports option one of the ministerial advisory committee as in the eh contains in the Amendment Bill. We broadly support it as the best option